Council members, take your seats. We'll be starting in a moment. Okay, everybody. At 6:03 PM, I'd like to call the voting session to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas.
Present via Zoom.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Here.
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mr. Thornton?
But I am here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Eleven of eleven.
All right. Thank you very much. We have one proclamation. We did have one for casual day. However, there's nobody here from there, so we'll move it to the next meeting. We do have a proclamation for St. Patrick's Day, which I will read now. Whereas we join today with our citizens who proudly trace their ancestry to the ancient Isle of Ireland as the entire nation comes together to celebrate St. Patrick's Day. And whereas it was the potato famine in the 1840s that set in motion one of the greatest human migrations in history, with millions of Irish men, women, and children leaving their homeland to travel to the New World to begin a new life. And whereas, from Ellis Island to northeastern Pennsylvania, thousands of those immigrants made their way to settle in Luzeur County, and their descendants remain here today, still embracing the precious Irish values of faith, fortitude, and fellowship. And whereas, like all other proud ethnic groups who came to the United States, the Irish people have pursued the American dream, seeking freedom, justice, peace, and prosperity, and through the years have helped to shape Luzeur County's diverse culture, character, and constitution. Now, therefore, we, the Luzeur County Council, with great enthusiasm designate March 17th in the year 2025 as St. Patrick's Day in Luzeur County. Thank you. Okay. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. First, we have Mr. Persia. Oh, just, yeah, hit the button. There you go.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Lombardo, Council. I just have a question about the union contract, the bargaining with the public service. How many members are there? And how many classifications are there? That's all I want. And how long's the contract? That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Persia. Manager Crocomou, do you, or Attorney Skeen, do you want to respond to that?
I don't really understand the specific question that you're asking. Which union? Is that what you're asking?
No, it's the public service union that you just did the contract with. I want to know how many members belong to that union.
We don't have a public service.
Well, the... Number four.
Yeah, they're... Mr. Persia is talking about the prison guard contract.
Are you talking about the prison guards?
Correct.
I don't have the exact number of members, but it's our corrections officers. The only members that are, employees that are not members are what are called the white shirts and the higher officers.
Okay. Is there, how many classifications? Are there just one or two classifications?
No, there are multiple classifications.
Okay. And how long is the contract for?
I believe it's four years.
It's four years, but I'm not inclined to discuss particulars of what we are negotiating because if it isn't passed, we don't want to commit any later interaction.
I understand that. Thank you for the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Persia. Mr. Raybo? Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're not on. No, you're good. Okay. Anybody else for public comment on the voting session agenda? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 2025, 2025 voting session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Meeting minutes are approved. Yes. Oh, I apologize. Attorney Skeen, would you please announce the executive session?
Yes. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session during which time we discussed the contract for the detectives and for the COs.
Thank you very much, Attorney Skeen. All right. We'll move on into our agenda items. Number one, motion to adopt the resolution approving a lease with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs for the placement of 911 radio equipment. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to introduce the ordinance amending the Luzeur County subdivision and land development ordinance to incorporate a revised fee schedule. There's no motion. It's automatically introduced.
No.
Oh.
Not this one, right? It's not budget.
Oh, okay. Well, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between Luzeur County and the Luzeur County Detectives Association. First, we will have a motion to remove from the table.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call on the removal.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, at this time.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton? Taken off the table.
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
There's eight yes, three no.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll have the motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved. Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
We have seven yes, four no passes.
All right. Thank you. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between Luzeur County and Lyona Public Service Employees Union, Local 1300.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution amending Resolution 2024-87, which approved an agreement with Delta Airport Consultants Incorporated for engineering and planning services at the Wilkes-Barre Wyoming Valley Airport.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we'll have motions regarding the 2025 CCAP Spring Conference. These motions will be to authorize members to attend. What members?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I don't know how this, is there nominations or is it just whatever members are typically attending? What members are here?
Whatever.
Hold on a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, to clarify my motion, whatever members wish to attend, I move to reimburse whatever members would like to attend.
I think it's only me.
Okay.
What are the dates?
It's this weekend.
Okay.
Sunday through Tuesday.
Move to reimburse Mr. Sabatino to attend the Spring CCAP Conference.
Thank you. Any other, no other members of council intend to attend?
No, not this time.
Okay. All right. Okay. There's a motion and is this, are you still okay with the second? Well, yeah, I would hope that you are. Okay. All right. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnawski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
I look forward to giving my report at the next work session. Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. We have Mr. Raybo.
If I may...
Oh, I apologize, Manager Crocomou.
I'd like to highlight the terms, some of the terms in the detective contract. And then Chief County Solicitor Skeen will discuss the CBA regarding the Lyona contract. The detectives' contract will be an agreement from January 1st of 2025 through December 31st of 2028. There's a 3% wage increase for four years for detectives hired prior to January 1st, 2021. Detectives hired after January 1st, 2021, via salary increase in January of 2025, $65,000 a year. In January 1st, 2026, $70,000 per year. January 1st, 2027, $73,000. January 1st, 2028, $76,273. The detectives hired after January 1st, 2021 accruals, there'll be an increase from 10 to 12 six days and an increase to 15 days.
All right. Thank you, Manager Crocomou. Attorney Skeen?
Yes. Yes. The contract for Lyona, for the corrections officers, has had a number of changes. I'll just highlight some of them. And we had the benefit of the state mediators to help the sides come together on this one. There's a new process for seniority where the officers will have, instead of just a straight seniority rank, there'll be a number of ways to gain points. So it won't go by strict seniority. It'll go by time plus points based on testing, review, and their file. There'll be a change in differential and a requirement to work their sixth night for overtime. Their wages will be a 3% for, it's a five-year contract with a 3% increase each year. And one of the issues that had been most, had to be worked out most together, where it was a change in what's called the Code of Ethics. And there's been numerous changes in that, but it had, that basically has to do with disciplinary actions and being able to figure out how to discipline somebody for what they may have done wrong. And before, it was justified this antiquated rules that they had, but now they first and foremost have to follow the same rules, personnel rules, that all other county officials have to follow. And then their levels of disciplinary action are spelled out very clearly. And the issues that come up have been categorized so that it'll be easier for administration to be able to work with the COs, and everybody will know what is right and wrong in their process. That's basically an overview of the agreement.
Thank you, Attorney Skeen. Okay. Are we good? Public comment, Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, Manager Crocomou, ladies and gentlemen. Mark Raybo Hazelton, this is in regards to work session item number three for the LURDA. I have a concern and a question. Concern about if this is going, the 1,300 acres approximately of land that's going to be developed is going to be used for AI centers. I would like to know as far as, well, the concern is, AI data centers, I don't know if you're aware, Mr. Chairman and members of council, Manager Crocomou, but AI data centers use a significant amounts of water, huge amounts. And the resources, the water resources down in Hazel Township and also in Sugarloaf Township in that port, in that area, are very scant. So I would think that there would have to be huge amounts of well drilling and also MS4 projects for stormwater if they're going to be digging that much, you know, and putting in the, well, they're going to have to put in the MS4, obviously, for state and local regulation purposes. But, you know, as far as the water resources that are necessary, as well as the electrical, because I don't know if, how much electrical, you know, power they're going to need, but I do know, and I don't know if anybody's aware from the news, that Mr. Bill Gates, the founder of Microsoft, one of the founders of Microsoft, purchased Three Mile Island to get more power, you know, more energy for data centers that would be developed in the northeast portion of the country. So I don't know how that ties in, if they're going, if the developers are going to make that, make that known here tonight or down the road. And also, question is, I see some names on the deeds, deed for the 1,300 acres. Has there been any kind of ethical disclosure or any kind of disclosures from any sort of principal owners from those, from that land, the 1,300 acres, that would benefit from this? Because, I mean, I see certain names on there, and I don't know if that would preclude the county from entering into any kind of contract. And that's what I wanted to know, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Griffith?
First of all, I want to thank the manager and Chief Solicitor for giving us a breakdown of what those contracts were about. Thank you very much. I think that's, it's very interesting to know what was in those contracts. Kudos to the four people that voted against the detective contract. That was pretty lucrative, from what I see, from, obviously, from the pretty top level. As, you know, given them increase in accruals, plus the pay raise and all the other things that they're getting, I think it's a pretty, pretty heavy contract for the taxpayers to pay for. So we'll see how that all pans out in budget time. On the Lyona contract, if we could get some clarity, I know there were some issues about the uniform fund, and I'm sure when we get a copy of the contract, we'll be able to see that. But did we fix the uniform clause as well, that they got the money upfront and we didn't have to do that, pay in the vendor issue that we had back in the past, if you wanted to answer that?
The two issues with the uniforms, one, for new employees, it's only going to, if they start from January to June, so the January, so they'll go through for the whole year, they get the full 350. But if they start after June, they don't get paid for the first year.
Okay. That's perfect. And that's a lump sum money rather than, in the past, what they were doing was they were giving it to the vendor, and so we corrected that. So that's, that's great. I'm glad that the administration corrected that, because that was a real logistical nightmare, as well as an administrative nightmare for everybody.
I meant to bring that up. I asterisked it for myself, but I went over it.
Perfect. And then my last point, my last point is on the work session on the LURDA. I certainly hope we'll look at Councilman Haas's idea about LURDAs and how we give LURDAs out to developers. I know it's incentive for developers to come here, but it's also a detriment to our tax base. So I think we, they should be incremental from the beginning to the end of the whole 10 years, not 100% for eight years and then prorated for the last two, or vice versa, whichever plan they want to do. But I think we should be getting more from the developers from the front end, so it's less burden on the taxpayers. I know we're not getting that money from the land to start with, but everything that we get extra for development is extra money that we don't have to raise taxes on the people. So consider that when you talk about that at the work session. Thank you very much.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Christine Boyle. I am the newly elected chair of the election board. And I just wanted to, although I don't take the oath until tomorrow, I wanted to just, I introduce myself and just say I'm, you know, looking forward to getting working with the board, with the bureau, and anybody in the manager's office and council as needed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the jungle.
Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6:25. We'll restart at 6:35. All right, council members. 6:37, we'll start the, uh, work session. We already had a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krizniewski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
10 of 11?
Thank you. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? Any? Anything? Anything? Okay. All right. Is there a, uh, motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. Okay. Division reports for February 2025?
Uh, thank you. Uh, as usual, if you have any particular questions, uh, you can email me, uh, text me, uh, call me. Uh, there are some, uh, matters that, uh, I wanted to discuss. The first, uh, are some events that are coming up in March. Um, there will be a bingo with veterans Thursday, March 20th, at 4:45 at the VA. Uh, that was, uh, an event, uh, that was spearheaded by Councilwoman Krizniewski, uh, to work with the VA. And I want to thank Megan Stone, uh, and Kevin Clocker for, uh, coordinating that. The next is that the opioid, uh, misuse and addiction abatement, uh, committee will have a town hall meet, meeting in Hazleton, at the Hazleton City Hall, uh, on the 24th, March 24th, at 5:30. Uh, there are two other matters that, uh, I'd like to speak to, uh, right now, that are not in, uh, the report. The first matter is that I, I want to specifically thank, uh, Scott Lindy, uh, who came to our council meeting two weeks ago for providing information of an appraisal and notice of the possibility that the redevelopment authority will be posting an RFP. Uh, based on that information that he provided, uh, the county administration is conducting a comprehensive review of the current agreement, uh, the redevelopment authority which operates our rail system in Luzerne County. Uh, we are committed to exploring viable options that will serve our community's best interest. As many of you may recall, the county provided funding to the redevelopment authority in 2001, because the authority was in danger of defaulting on its mortgage and losing ownership of the tracks. While we conduct this review, the administration will be asking that the redevelopment authority and the Luzerne County Rail Corporation refrain from entering into any agreements for the next 60 days. I want to be clear, this is not to imply or insinuate that there is any wrongdoing. This is our review of the agreement and subsequent payments that were made from the redevelopment authority to both community development, uh, and the county. Luzerne County deserves a rail system that maximally enhances our business opportunities. It is essential that we have infrastructure in place, not only that supports, but also drives economic growth. If the existing rail line is deemed inoperable, we must consider the development of a rails to trails initiative, offering a recreational pathway that can boost tourism and community engagement while preserving the land. We must recognize that infrastructure not only includes roads, bridges, and airports, but also our railroads. The challenges we have faced to date will hopefully improve over time. Our goal is to identify the status of the agreement and where Luzerne County stands with that original agreement. The second, uh, issue that I want to address specifically is that there are claims being made by certain county council candidates. The one has stated that I plan to raise taxes by 5%. Let me be clear, this statement is completely and utterly false. As a voter in Luzerne County, I believe it is essential for candidates to speak the truth, and I take this responsibility seriously. I encourage voters to seek accurate information and to hold all candidates accountable for their claims. I never said I plan to raise taxes 5%, and I never will. It seems there may be some confusion with my predecessors' policies, but let me reiterate, these are not my plans. I am committed to transparency and fiscal responsibility, and I will continue to prioritize the needs of our county without imposing unnecessary tax burdens. Another statement that this candidate concerns, makes, concerns the misconception that Luzerne County has $22 million in cash.
26.
Was it 26? I'm sorry. That makes it even better. To explain that we do not, I'm going to ask Mary Rozell, the Division Head of Budget and Finance, to come to the podium.
Hi, good evening. Um, I wish we had $26 million that we can spend, but no, that is not true. We do not. And I think the misconception is that, um, the individual was talking about a fund balance. So what a fund balance is, is just like, you know, if we were a publicly traded company, right? Your assets have, have to equal your liabilities plus your owner's equity. In government accounting, there's owner's equity, there's a fund balance. Okay, it still has to balance. So your total assets equal your liabilities plus our fund balance. So, in our assets, if you look at our assets, a big portion of our assets are made up of receivables. Um, at the end of the year, like, the 2023 audit would be the last audit that you can see online. We're currently doing the 2024 audit. But in 2023, which is the one that's, um, that's published, the fund balance was actually $24.4 million in, in that budget, in that audit, not in the budget, in that audit. So, if you look at the receivables that were there at that point in time, the biggest number is your tax receivable, right? So, um, your 2023 taxes are not all collected at the end of December. Okay, some of that money still comes in in January and February. So what happens when the auditors come in, is they look at that, that money gets recorded back to 2023. So we record revenue and we debit a receivable, which increases our assets, right? And then it has to balance. So increasing those assets, which is not cash, it's a receivable, increases your fund balance, because everything has to equal. Um, in addition to that, there are other receivables that we have. We have receivables from the agencies, you know, children and youth being the majority of, of that receivable at the end of the year. Big number. There's another $11 million in receivables that are sitting there on the books at the end of 2023, as well as prepaid assets. None of those things that I just talked about are cash, right? They will turn into cash, those receivables will be collected, right? And we'll eventually get the cash for them, but we'll also have expenses that need to be paid. So a fund balance is absolutely not your cash balance. The other thing is that, that having a healthy fund balance is really important to maintain our credit rating, right? We now have a, an A bond rating, right, which is really good. It actually allows us to borrow, not that we do want to borrow, but we are in a position where we can.
And what do we, what do we want?
We want a AAA. That's what we want. We want the best rating. Um, and there are, you know, one of the things that needs to occur is you need to have approximately two times, two months' worth of revenue or expenditures as your fund balance in order for it to be considered a healthy fund balance. So if you look at 2023's budget, it was $146 million. 20%, or two months' worth of that would be 24.3 million. We had 24 million. So we're exactly where we need to be in order to maintain that healthy rating, but it is certainly not cash. So, I know that was sort of a little accounting lesson, assets equal liabilities, plus, plus.
That was such a good accounting lesson.
But, um, I mean, that's kind of the simplest way for me to explain that, right?
Let's pretend we had that money in our spending.
Well, then we would have a deficit, and we would have a negative fund balance. Our credit rating would drop, and we would obviously, you know, be back where we were several years ago, when we did not have an A credit rating.
Mary, thank you so much for that education. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
I just, all I know is, I Googled it, Ms. Rozell, and it said $26 million when you Google unencumbered fund balance. I just, just so you know, I Googled it, and that's what Google said.
If you look at the, wait, Google said we have that? Is that what Google said?
That's what Google said.
If you go online, our 2023 audit is published online. You can see it there. I believe it's page, I can tell you for sure, it's page 15. If you go to page 15, you will see what the, what the, um, there, actually, there's a restricted and an unrestricted fund balance. So maybe, eh, even with that, it was 28. So I, I don't know where the 2016 fund, that's not what's on the audit. So I don't know where I got that number from.
Thank you very much for clearing all that up, Ms. Rozell and Manager Crocamo. Anybody else have any, any questions for Ms. Rozell on that? Okay. And, uh, just one comment, really quickly on what, uh, Manager Crocamo was saying about the, um, the rail system in the county. Um, I, I actually looked into this a little bit last year. Um, I, I did a little bit of digging within the redevelopment authority, um, about our rail system. A lot of residents, I'll tell you, have approached members of council about, um, sort of reactivating some of those rail lines. And now that we have, uh, you know, that recreational rail line in, in Greater Pittston, which goes to Jim Thorpe, I think that this is a really good time to restart that conversation, reconnecting some of the old lines that we have. Our rails to trails in Pittston actually links right up into Wilkes-Barre. That all, and, and that, that, uh, that rail system is actually owned by the redevelopment authority. So, all of that does link through the entire, uh, the entire Susquehanna River Valley. Um, you know, in Greater Pittston, we used to have the Laurel Line, which was, uh, a really, you know, beautiful light rail system. If we could have something like that again in Luzerne County, I think that would be tremendous, uh, for the economic development in this, in this area, especially in the Wyoming Valley, and, um, and there's other areas in the county where we own rails as well. So, that's something that I'm really interested in. I'm really glad that, uh, Mr. Lindy brought that up, and, uh, now we sort of have restarted that conversation. We brought it to the public light. Um, and, and I think that this is really going to be something positive for the county if we can, if we can make the right moves and get some things going in the right direction. So thank you very much for making that public statement, Manager Crocamo. And again, thank you, Mr. Lindy, uh, for bringing that up to us. Okay. All right. Well, next up, we will have a discussion regarding the resolution to renew the lease with the City of Nanacoke for Magisterial District Court, 110302.
We have our court administrator, Paul Hindmarsh.
Mr. Hindmarsh?
Come on down.
Come on down.
So what you have before you is a renewal, uh, for the lease with the City of Nanacoke for Magisterial District, 11302. Uh, we have been tenants of the city, uh, from, I believe, approximately 2005, uh, as caseload, and, uh, things have gotten greater. The city has graciously allowed us to, uh, use some additional space, and now they're letting us use the, uh, council chambers, uh, for courtroom and hearing purposes. Uh, so we respectfully, or respectfully request, uh, that you consider this lease, uh, and the renewal. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Hindmarsh? All right. Thank you very much. Easy enough.
Thank you.
All right. Finally, we have a discussion regarding the resolution providing tax exemption for new construction in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Vitalization Tax Act.
Good evening, County Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, my name is Tom Williams with North Point Development, and I'm joined here with my colleague, Brian Stahl. Um, we're happy to, uh, come back to County Council and talk about another exciting development project in Luzerne County. Um, in your packet tonight should be the proposed draft resolution, uh, for consideration, as well as some slides. And, um, I'll, I'll head right into the slides right now, if that's okay. Um, just to refresh everybody's memory of who North Point is, uh, we are an industrial development company based out of Kansas City, Missouri, but we've been developing here in the, uh, Wyoming Valley and, and Luzerne County for about the last eight years. Um, overall, our development portfolio is about 150 million square feet across the country. Again, we're a national development, industrial development company. Uh, there's about 10 million square feet of space across the country under, under development right now. And, um, overall... And overall, we've had development projects in about 26 states across the country and created over 100,000 jobs. Some of the, on the second page of our slides, you'll see some of the companies that we work closely with in their developing real estate solutions. Onto the third page is intended to highlight our Pennsylvania development experience. You can see the circles that are shown on the map there, which is in eastern Pennsylvania, and a lot of our development projects follow the Interstate 81 corridor. You can see there from the Scranton area in Lackawanna County, all the way down to the Pennsylvania border, but there's certainly a cluster in the Luzerne County area. We've developed in Pennsylvania about 36 million square feet, about 14,000 jobs, and over $3 billion of private investment capital into these projects. There's a few testimonials on the left side of the slide as well. Moving on to page four is intended to highlight our experience in Luzerne County. We are really proud to have completed about 8.5 million square feet of projects. Of that, there's a million square feet that's available right now in the Hazleton area, just south of the city, predominantly in Hazleton City, and a portion of the property is in Hazel Township. We have 15 companies that have been located in our development projects here in Luzerne County, over 2,000 jobs created, and a billion dollars of private capital investment. We have more plans along that 424 corridor in southern Luzerne County, south of the City of Hazleton that will be forthcoming in the future that we're really excited about. So moving on to page five, we're here today to talk about a LERTA request for a property in Hazel Township. So the property identified is just north of the Humboldt North Industrial Park, and it runs along in that area, the northern boundary of Hazel Township. So the property really is entirely in Hazel Township, and you can see the outline of it there. Overall, the total property is about 1,283 acres, with Interstate 81 on the eastern boundary there. The project will have phasing to it. We'll get to that in just a moment, but what's intended to be shown here is, of the total acreage of the property, less than 500 acres of that would be developed. It's around 472, and you can see that outlined. In three phases, the project would be brought together and brought online, and that's what's being shown here on this slide. Moving on to page seven, so this project is known as Project Hazel Nut. It is intended to be a data center campus with 15 data center buildings and some ancillary buildings within the project. As I mentioned, the buildings will be delivered in three phases. Phase one will have five buildings, and those will likely be completed in late 2026. Phase two will have three buildings, and that is intended to be delivered in early 2028. And phase three of seven buildings in the second quarter of 2029. The primary entrance to the project will be North Park Drive, an extension of North Park Drive as it sits today, so that's the primary road off of 924 that includes all of the Humboldt North Industrial Park. So we will be utilizing that road, it's a township road, to be the primary entrance to the park. Another advantage of Project Hazel Nut is a low-traffic projection. So data center projects generally have reduced traffic from a normal industrial development project, so the primary vehicles that can be expected are really associated with employees and passenger vehicles. There's really very minimal truck traffic, just some, a few daily deliveries, but it's not a predominant portion of the traffic projection here. Moving on to page eight, our proposed LERTA request. We heard what the Infrastructure Committee, the feedback that was provided, and this is the projected schedule that we have revised. Initially, we had requested a 100% abatement for portions of the abatement term. We've revised that to be a 90% abatement for years one through seven, 80% in year eight, 70% in year nine, and 60% abatement in year 10. In addition, we're proposing to pay the county $2,500 per acre of each development phase. So again, the portions of that property to be developed. And 50% of that payment would be at issuance of building permit, and 50% of that payment would be provided upon certificate of occupancy. So the payments per this LERTA request would be upfront as each phase. It goes through the permit process and comes online. The estimated total payments to the county would be $1,180,000 upon full campus development. Moving on to page nine, construction jobs created. We are estimating about 900 construction jobs throughout the project. Permanent jobs created, also estimating around 900 for the project. And total Luzerne County taxes that would be collected and tax revenue to the county over 20 years for this project would be $14,600,000 and change.
Mr. Williams, I have a question for you.
Certainly.
If you have the answer to it. So each phase, do you know about how many acres each phase will consist of?
Yes, sir. Back on page six.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. We've identified that phase one would be about.
I see it. Thank you.
210 acres, phase two, 97, and phase three would be 165 acres.
Okay. And you said half of that, 20, half of that stipend essentially, whatever it is, will be paid upfront, the other half will be upon completion of the phase?
50% at issuance of building permit.
Sure.
So right before construction starts, and then 50% at issuance of certificate of occupancy at the conclusion of construction.
Okay. And that leads me into another question involving construction. We've actually recently been having other conversations about, like, local labor in Luzerne County. What kind of labor do you think you'll be using during the construction phases? Will you be using local labor?
I think as a rule, North Point tries to engage local contractors and local labor as much as possible.
Okay.
I think that it's, the construction plan is not really set yet, but we are always looking for reliable and qualified local labor to be participants in the project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Sabatino? Mr. Sabatino, then Mr. Haas. All right.
Good evening, gentlemen. At one of the Infrastructure Committee meetings, you mentioned that you were going to be working to reinforce the electrical grid in the area. Can you expand on what that means a little bit? Like, how are you going to go about reinforcing the electrical grid to sustain this project?
Yes. So that's really up to PPL. So it's kind of a partnership of that PPL and whatever, you know. PPL would be, is analyzing their system, figuring out where transmission upgrades need to occur, and really reinforcing their grid, their network, their power system with the guidance and approval of PJM as well. So it's, you know, there isn't just one power line that runs throughout, it's a whole grid network. And PPL, again, in cooperation and partnership with PJM, works that process to make the transmission upgrades that are necessary for a project like this.
Thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mr. Williams. Hi, Mr. Stahl. Welcome back again, and sorry I can't be with the deer in the flesh. You know, being a member of the Infrastructure Committee, I appreciate Mr. Sabatino putting this together, and just really giving North Point just a fair forum to talk about this upcoming project and for us to do the due diligence as the committee. And there were some things that I sent an email out to council a few days ago, and I'm hoping and assuming all of you read that, but there were just some extra missing pieces of information that I was hoping that North Point would have secured by the time of this work session. And the first one is there, if you saw on the PowerPoint slideshow, that there's 900 cost construction jobs that are anticipated, as well as 900 permanent jobs. And we were hoping, as a committee, to nail down exactly what the permanent jobs would be, like a job description, a list of those potential jobs, and then also what the salary schematic would look like. Obviously, knowing North Point's just the developer, you are not the firm that's going to come in and occupy the site, but I know you're working in tandem with the potential occupier of this land. So I don't know, gentlemen, if you could really, first and foremost, supply that to County Council in advance of a voting session, if this, actually, if that's the next step for this endeavor. That's my first question.
Certainly, Councilman Haas. Yeah, and I do have some more points here that didn't make it into the slideshow today, but, so, as you mentioned, we're the developer, we're not the end user for the campus. That hasn't been identified yet, but what we are able to kind of project what types of jobs would be assumed to be at a project like this, you would have a data center operations manager that requires a bachelor's degree of an IT field or equivalent practical experience, somewhere like five years of experience in computing infrastructure, networking, operating systems, two years of experience managing technical teams. And what I'm reading off really is information about what can be expected. This is not, this is sort of industry standard of what I've been able to gather. Again, we're not the end user. I can't say this is exactly for this site, but this is what kind of can be expected in a project like this. So a DC operations manager leads teams, maintains and executes security and operational procedures, repairs, fixes, performs preventative maintenance on equipment, servers, machines, et cetera. That job is roughly, is projected to be somewhere around $99,000 to $145,000 per year for a data center operations manager. Another example would be a data center technician position. This is hands-on or educational experience, including an associate's degree or equivalent experience in an IT-related field, computer hardware, troubleshooting, repair skills experience, computer networking experience, and experience with different software platforms that might be applicable to the job. Work duties include hardware, network diagnostics and repairs, assembling and installing equipment, maintaining inventory, development of scripts, updating servers and network hardware. A data center technician is projected to be somewhere between $60,000 and $85,000 salary per year, based on experience and the preference of the company. So those are the examples of positions that we might expect at a project like this.
Okay. Many thanks. And again, we've been, we've seen fastest precedent with different corporations that come here, and they develop our plan for a tax abatement, and lo and behold, a lot of these family-sustaining jobs never materialize. They're, they're paid an entry-level wage, and it's very difficult. A lot of folks have to work two and three jobs to make these kind of jobs work for their family situation. And I was just hoping we can nail down some of the higher salaries that would really show the true value of this project, because, and again, I just want to be very clear to the public, to my colleagues there, I don't want to be adversarial, because I really appreciate Mr. Williams and Mr. Stahl very much, they do a good job, and they're very forthcoming. However, the second question, this is more of a council debate that I would like to see us have as well, is just with these type of letters that come by, when you have a 90% tax abatement for seven years, that's essentially the old-school Koz tax abatements that you had 100% for 10 years. And I acknowledge wholeheartedly that Hazel Nut project, that different phases with different whole-scale payments out to Luzerne County, and that's very reminiscent to that one project that was south of Hazleton with that mine scarred land. So that I fully appreciate. However, I still have a very difficult time with picking winners and losers on Luzerne County Council. I just really think it really hogties those firms that would like to develop our lands and come to council, come before us, and they just want to do a good job. With these kind of things, North Point, a few years ago, with Mr. Miles, he actually, in a deal with Hazel, with Panover Nine, corrected this, and this schematic that we see here is the same exact one that he proposed. And now somehow, this is now the new baseline. So I was hoping that, gentlemen, you could maybe massage this and make it a little more palatable for the taxpayers. If you could take it back to your principals, again, before we put this on the voting session, and see if you can meet us a little more halfway. All right, what are your thoughts on that?
Mr. Haas, Brian Stahl, definitely appreciate your comments. We actually added in the pilot, though, which I think is a very significant distinction to the last LERTA that North Point had proposed and was voted upon for this council. So when factoring in that pilot, which actually kicks in prior to tax year zero, because it would be due upon issuance of a building permit before there's any actual improvements on the tax records, for the first phase, for example, when you factor in both the payment at the time of building permit issuance, time of certificate of occupancy, that's $525,000 split between. So actually, that would completely wipe out the first year and a portion of the second year's worth of abatement under the proposed LERTA schedule with that 90%. So we're really not, we're really waiting to see any kind of tax savings until year two, and it would really would be about 35% or so of that second year's taxes. So we actually modeled it after the last LERTA that council approved was 100% schedule with a pilot payment. So you've done a good job at the Infrastructure Committee and negotiated well on behalf of the county, so we've done both, both the stepped-up taxes out of the gate, plus that pilot payment. Secondly, comparing it to what's received now by the county, a lot of this property, although it was already zoned industrial, was enrolled in the Clean and Green Program, so there was a much lower tax basis that was being paid to the county. So immediately upon any kind of the earth-moving activities, that Clean and Green designation would roll off, and there would be a stepped-up tax basis paid on the land for this project all the way throughout the history of LERTA, from day one. So that would kick up to about $60,000 or so of additional tax revenue realized on a land basis.
Absolutely, Mr. Stahl. Thank you so much, because that's exactly what I was referencing, and I do want to acknowledge. Thanks for the good faith effort on that level. And again, this is why it's a more global issue here about these LERTAs and about how the government gets involved in stepping on the scales and providing benefits for established corporations over those who maybe don't have that luxury. And the third component here is just the, nationwide, we see these data centers coming up and picking up steam, and it's very lucrative right now. So I want to encourage my colleagues to, if we could collaboratively, really do our due diligence, and see that there's a lot of profit here in a data center, and that for us to just wholeheartedly just say, oh, yeah, we love development, no matter what the cost, we see dollar signs, we see these incremental payments come in, that if we could just make sure that we get the best deal for the taxpayers, because we are in a very unique time, that this is going to be picking up steam all across the country. We saw some there in. to be picking up steam all across the country. We saw some there in Salem Township recently, and, you know, the Infrastructure Committee, we looked at other areas around the country. The Northeast is still relatively new and fertile ground for something like this. So I just really hope that we could take a look holistically, the whole picture here, and make sure that we get the best value and that we we don't just do something haphazardly and say, oh, yeah, we see a couple bucks here, and clean that profit where we might be saying goodbye to a lot more. And again, that's not necessarily for you, Mr. Stahl, Mr. Williams, but for my colleagues. So aside from other environmental concerns that were raised, that's that's my comments. Mr. Chairman, thanks for the forum.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. Sabatino?
One thing that was addressed here tonight by Mr. Raybo was the use, the water usage. I know in the Infrastructure Committee meeting, you guys mentioned that you were looking into a gray water system. Do you have any update on that? Or can you speak to it a little more so that the general public listening to this meeting will know what type of cooling system you want to use and the potential to use gray water in it? Thank you.
Sure. Great question. And, Mr. Raybo, thanks for for bringing that up as well. Data centers do have, can have a water cooling component to the to the project. This project, being located in Luzerne County and Hazleton, has a cooler climate than a place like Northern Virginia where where a lot of data centers are already located. So we have a favorable climate that would contribute to more air cooling of a project like this than than for example, in Virginia. But water cooling is likely to be a component of this project. We are working on a partnership with the wastewater treatment plant in the Hazleton area to capture the treated effluent from the plant and convey it to the campus for cooling. And then the discharged water would be likewise conveyed back to the treatment facility for further treatment and put it back into the system. So cooling water that would be potentially utilized at a site like this is not from wells. It's not from the public water system. The only public water utilized would be for bathrooms and essentially normal kind of operations of a facility, but not not in the cooling process, what what might be expected in a data center. We're excited about this partnership and this opportunity to think a little different and think outside the box and find an opportunity to really make sure this this is environmentally environmentally friendly solution.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Hi, gentlemen. So quick question, thinking outside the box along that line. You guys said that you guys are in 26 states building and completed projects, correct? Have you guys ever considered contributing housing to the counties that you operate in?
Great question. North Point does have a multifamily housing division. It's primarily in Kansas City, in our in our home base, some a few other projects in St. Louis, I think maybe also Cincinnati. But Brian and I are continuing to talk to our folks and and try to get them interested, more interested in in housing opportunity here in northeastern Pennsylvania. So it's a conversation we continue to have. And because we personally, we believe there's there's housing opportunity here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Krshnovsky?
I didn't ask you when you at the infrastructure, but when she said that, because I did ask that question in the meeting, but are you going to have green spaces around the buildings, like green spaces for outdoor, if the employee would like to sit outside or eat their lunch outside or do something outside? Is there going to be enough of green? Because you need, I think it's very healthy for the employee and the environment to have green spaces.
Yeah, certainly. As noted earlier, the the total acreage of the site is is over over 1,200 acres, and the development footprint is is less than 500. So there will be a lot of green space in and around the campus and try to incorporate landscaping and and outdoor friendly areas, along with, you know, the the end user kind of dictates some of that stuff as well. But certainly know that a a green environment helps contribute to happy employees. So definitely want to want to make that part of the project as best we can.
I think just piggybacking on that, maybe, I know, I know we spoke of solar, and I know that that wasn't really an option. But you think it can be maybe for the lighting of the parking lots and doing like the miniscule things that you could use solar power for?
It it's possible. We really haven't looked at that yet. I can tell you that the the new technology and lighting and and this dark sky lighting really, and LED frankly uses so much less electricity than than the the traditional old light bulbs do. So we believe that the lighting certainly will stay localized on the campus and and potentially we could we could look at solar for light poles throughout the site. But to be determined.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes, back to my thought. Before the LURDA revision, which you guys did a great job, thank you for that compromise. I'm sure that discussion in the Infrastructure Committee went very well. Hypothetically, if we would have said to you before this LURDA revision was presented, if you were, you know, you still had the first version, and we said, would you consider contributing housing to the county county at this time? Would that have been taken into consideration?
That's a really hard question to answer. You know, housing challenges, along with housing solutions, are it's a vast landscape. So I'm not really sure how to provide, how to say if housing was a requirement, you know, how we would have reacted to that. It's I think it's a really, it's a broad topic and with lots of answers. I don't, Brian, you have any?
Can I, can I, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is it your question, Ms. Stevenson? Oh, okay. I apologize. Go ahead if you want to finish.
No, yeah, it's a complex question, you know, and and there's a number of ways to to attack and approach it. Really, one of the main ways is, I think it's already being done both at a state level and and recognition at a local level, too, of the importance. So very, very important topic. I think one of the the big important drivers, too, is obviously increasing tax base. But having, you know, in increasing jobs and things in the area provides opportunity. And that opportunity also attracts additional development in a residential area. So it's really a partnership at at many levels, you know, it's at the at the private level, but then it's also at at a municipal level, here at the county level. I know you at the county are committed to that solution and and at a state level. So it's a very big, broad conversation. And as Tom had mentioned, we've talked about a lot, you know, with with our folks, you know, our division, one of the things we've we've really prided ourselves on is is doing what we do best, but also recognizing where we're not necessarily the best partner to execute on something like that. So on the multifamily division, that home base right now, we're making sure we have a solid, strong foundation in Kansas City, in St. Louis, first project in Cincinnati. So they're making the right trend by coming east. But, you know, so we'll we'll continue at it certainly and are absolutely willing to be part of the conversation. You know, we believe that as a good corporate citizen here, and we're here for the long haul. Tom and I both live here. I'm in Mountain Top. Tom's formerly from Mountain Top. So we're committed to those kind of solutions as well. We care about this community. So we obviously want to continue to to keep talking about it. And if there's a way that we can help, you know, lend our expertise, whether that be in in time, talent, or treasure, you know, we're we're here for those kinds of conversations and look forward to continue to have those in the future.
That's fabulous. Thank you so much. I don't really get the opportunity to ask developers like yourself what that would look like hypothetically, putting that into the universe, right? So thank you for your response. Yes, it's a very broad topic, very large, right? So many moving pieces. But just to get that insight means a lot. Thank you.
Just to piggyback off that, could I ask my question? Oh, then, Mr. Perry? Okay. Just to piggyback off of that, I every time that one of these learners comes up, this is one of the questions that gets asked is, you know, will there be housing or do you have a plan for housing? So not really a statement towards both of you, although you're included in this, but any developer that's interested, we are chomping at the bit to assist with a housing project. We truly are. This is something that all everybody on council seems to really want to do. So if there's any developers in the area that would like to partner with the county on something like this, we're we're happy to have a conversation about it. But my question, going back to what Ms. Stevenson was asking, is can you, do you have any information? Can you tell us a little bit about the the housing initiatives that you have in those cities that you mentioned? Do you do you have any information on that that you can share with us and how what that looks like in Kansas City and in or the other cities that you mentioned?
Yeah, absolutely. We can follow up maybe before the the next session. We can provide information, just summarizing, you know, the types of housing projects that we have, what we've done, you know, what they're what they're modeled after. Happy to do that.
Okay. Mr. Perry, and then Mr. LaScavage.
Not to prolong this, and I'll make my statements pretty brief. Thanks for Tom and and both of you for coming to our meeting tonight. Welcome back. You guys did a great job. It's nice working with North Point in the past and and going forward. I like the fact that you you thought, again, looking at out of the box and providing us with, you know, 2,500 per acre, is similar to Attorney Tavolo, and I think it's Hilliard that we gave the last third or two. And they were giving us a couple hundred thousand dollars per building and following the same building permit, the whole thing like you guys did. So I very much appreciate that. I think, again, you have proposed this, and I think going forward to all the the LURDA's that are going to be coming down the line, that is something that that we look forward to, and that looks that we as taxpayers also look forward to. That's $1,180,000 that you're going to give us at the end of this project. And 10 years goes pretty fast. I was I was involved eight years ago on the North Point down here. In two more years, 10 years is up. So down the line, you know, most of us won't be here, but Luzerne County will. So so I appreciate that very much, thinking outside the box. And I think down the line, we as a council are going to be looking at that as a means to approve these LURDA's, because that kind of stuff gives the money back to us really quickly. So again, thanks for coming. Thanks for the company.
Mr. LaScavage?
I just want to say thank you for sharpening your pencil, you know, to make this work. But in addition to that, I thank you for your honesty on the affordable housing, because one of the things that always come up is that subject. But I'm here to tell you, and I think you could probably agree with this, that going forward until the cost of materials drop, because houses are at $200 or better a square foot, there is not going to be such a thing unless it's subsidized as affordable housing. It won't exist, because the materials are so expensive, that's the reason that the prices are through the roof. Or there would be people building developments, because there's certainly a need like there is throughout the country. I think the last number I heard is like 4. some million home shortage throughout the country. So it's a for-real problem. But of course, the developers have to be able to make money, at least something, to do it. So I think that's the biggest, you know, that's the biggest problem right now that, you know, people are faced with that would even want to take on that kind of project.
I would also note that I did not mention affordable housing in that phrasing. Thank you.
Right. Mr. Sabatino?
Just a general comment to dovetail off of what Mr. Perry said. It has been a longtime goal of mine and many people on this council and the Infrastructure Committee to put out a schedule of what types of development would get, what types of considerations for LURDA's. And, you know, it is something that we are going to be taking up in the next couple months. But it is also something that we weren't sure if there's an appetite for something like that on council. So if you would email me and say you would like this for us to publish, a LURDA for a warehouse would look like this, a LURDA for tech development would look like this, and a LURDA for manufacturing would look like this. That is something that we're happy to take on and put it out in the world. And then we might get attract developers to come to us instead of wait for them to come to us. So going forward, that is something that I would be happy to take on.
All right. Anybody else?
Just one more statement. There is no conflict of interest related to county council or or anything else related to this project or or the North Point ownership of the property. Just making that statement.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll have public comment. Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, first of all, I appreciate the North Point developers and their presentation. As far as what was asked of them with routines pertaining to housing, I've mentioned here a few times over the many years I've been here, and also on the Redevelopment Authority, which County Manager Crocamo said, and I I would like to echo what she said, as far as the chairman, Mr. Lindy, and members of the Board of the Redevelopment Authority with respect to the rail. I know since I've and recently I've been off the board, but for many years, we've dealt with that with the rail. And I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Chairman, as well with the rails, with the rails to trails. And Mr. Lindy has been on the forefront of that for years. So I would echo what Manager Crocamo said as far as the idea of doing that and exploring that and making it come to fruition. With respect to the developments and LURDA's and I've said this to Manager Crocamo over the years, I've said it to members of council over the years, Mr. Haas has heard me say this many, many, many times, and the reporters and ladies and gentlemen who have come over the years, I'm more of a a TIF person than a LURDA. I believe a TIF would actually suit very well for especially for large-scale housing, commercial housing, especially over the years. I can give you two examples, Mr. Chairman, real quick. You have Stauffer Point, that's been like extended, and it's been pretty successful, I think. And if you're going to go on even a larger scale like what North Point has proposed here for the data centers, the Arena Project, the Arena Project is is still on the record from the state, even as the most successful development project that Luzerne County underwent with regards to a program of that scale. So and you can use the money because it's an increment and it builds up over time. You could use it for capital projects or for large-scale housing. So that's already built in. When you try to dissect it from a LURDA, it's very tough because statutorily and also financially, unless you have a sidebar agreement, can't do that. But with a TIF, it's already built in because each taxing body is getting money accrued over time in each pot. So I think that that needs to be explored, Mr. Chair and and Manager Crocamo. I've said this many, many times over the years, and I think that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any bills for public comment in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? I got a text before saying Mr. Granteed was having an issue raising his hand. Oh, there we go. All right, Mr. Granteed. Mr. Granteed, you can unmute yourself. There you go. Mr. Granteed. Mr. Granteed, you're muted. You can unmute yourself. Okay, looks like we're having a technical difficulty. Apologies, Mr. Granteed. If you'd like to send us an email to all of council with your comments, that that would be fine. I apologize that we're unable to hear you at this time. If there's nobody else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.